President.
I'm going to read the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and transmit the meeting through any media attendees are therefore advised to such recording or transmission by being whether received or unreceived by those present and are deemed unlawful or permissible. The matter before us this evening is 2016-109, resolved against lifting the cap on Commonwealth charter schools. How we're going to kind of run this meeting today is we have the president of QEA, Quincy Education, Quincy Education Association, Allison Cox here, and she will speak, as well as Nick Bolito, Director of Government Relations of Massachusetts Teacher Association, MTA. The both of whom will speak, and afterwards I will open it up to the committee to talk about anything that you would like to speak about. Does that sound good?
It sounds good.
Allison Cox, whenever you're ready.
I probably don't really need it. We're going to need it eventually, so.
Also like to acknowledge Councilor Raffin and Councilor Dopey as well with us today, and we also have a core, if I hadn't done that as well.
You can go ahead, one of you. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, councilors. My name is Allison Cox, and I am the president of the Quincy Education Association, proudly representing the more than 800 professional educators of Quincy Public Schools, as well as the faculty and professional support staff of Quincy College. I appreciate that you are placing the resolution against lifting the cap on Commonwealth charter schools onto my agenda. As most of you know, the Quincy School Committee unanimously approved a similar resolution last month. I'm very happy to say a few words about Commonwealth charter schools and about the potential impact of question two. As you know, question two seeks to increase the number of Commonwealth charter schools here in Massachusetts by lifting the current cap on the number of charter schools that are allowed statewide. If question two passes, an additional 12 Commonwealth charter schools could be established each and every year. Without the approval of local communities or their school committees, there would be no limit to the number of charter schools that could open in a single community. There would be no limit on how much money any one district could lose to charter schools. No local approval, and yet no limit to the hit on a local school budget. This year alone, charter schools will pull $450 million taxpayer dollars out of our public schools by just statewide. And while they call themselves public schools, there is no local oversight or accountability to local democratically elected leaders. QEA strongly opposes lifting the cap on charter schools, and we hope you do too. And although this is a statewide ballot question, the impact will be felt at the local level. In Quincy, 29 students currently attend charter schools. 29 students out of the student population of more than 9,000 students. And what message does that send? That parents of Quincy are overwhelmingly confident in the quality of education their children are receiving from the Quincy Public Schools. Our educators work hard, our custodians, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, food service workers, secretaries, administrators, superintendent, and our school committee members all work hard to keep Quincy Public Schools strong and vibrant and responsive to parents and to the community. But the impact of even just those 29 students who do attend charters is that more than $361,000 will be this district this year, and instead will go to fund the charter schools those students attend. This is money that could have been used by Quincy Public Schools for additional programs for our students, for professional development, for curriculum materials, and so much more. Unlike our public schools, Commonwealth charter schools need no community approval. They may hire unlicensed teachers. Those teachers are not subject to the educator evaluation regulations that we teachers are subject to. The Commonwealth charter schools are not accountable to local districts. Commonwealth charter schools are run autonomously, and although Quincy students attend and Quincy Public Schools' funds are in use, the elected members of the Quincy School Committee have no oversight with regard to these funds or these schools. We don't need to look very far to see the devastating impact charter schools are having on nearby districts. Based on projections by the Department of Education, some of those schools this year will lose more than $7 million. Cambridge will lose more than $11 million. Brockton will lose over $4 million. Plymouth is projected to lose $6.5 million this year. Waymouth will lose a little over $1 million, and Boston will lose more than $130 million. Make no mistake, these Commonwealth charter schools are not public schools. They are publicly funded, but they are privately run. They are well beyond the control of local school committees. They are not accountable to you or to taxpayers, and yet they are siphoning millions and millions of dollars from our public schools. The Save Our Public Schools campaign is a grassroots coalition opposing ballot question two, and it has been endorsed by organizations across the state, including the Mass Nurses' Association, the Mass Teachers Association, the Massachusetts AFSIO, the Massachusetts Democratic State Committee, the Mass Municipal Association, the Massachusetts Parent/Teacher Association, NAACP, Norfolk County Labor Council, American Federation of Teachers, Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts, and many others. More than 100 school committees across the state have already passed a resolution, someone to the one in front of you tonight. The Quincy Education Association urges you to pass this resolution tonight and send a loud and clear message that you, the elected leaders of the city of Quincy, oppose lifting the cap on Commonwealth charter schools. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions, and I do have a couple of folks with me from MTA who are also available to answer any questions you might have.
Nick, would you like to come up at all? Speak a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members for the opportunity to speak tonight, Nick Bolito, the Director of Government Relations for the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and also can say proudly that I'm a former Quincy School Committee member and the former Finance Director of the City of Quincy. There's not much more to add to what my colleague Al, who's so well appointed, illustrated for you tonight, but I think that there are two things that I'd like you to remember. The first is that the resolution before you is not about whether or not charter schools should exist, or whether or not we think that they are a good idea. The issue before us, and the issue that we're grappling with in a statewide ballot referendum this November, is whether or not we should, without check, add 12 charter schools a year across the Commonwealth in any community, regardless of the financial impact on the schools, the financial impact on the community, or the classroom impact on the student. And really, for Massachusetts, we've had charter schools since education reform in 1993. That type of expansion is simply unheard of. And what we're seeing now are there challenges around some of the reforms needed in charter schools, some of the issues around licensure, around curricula, around governance, that we would like to see addressed before we take the drastic step of adding such a vast number of schools. And I think I just want to highlight one important endorsement that this campaign has, and that's that of the Mass Municipal Association. And it's very rare that the Massachusetts Teachers Association and the Massachusetts Municipal Association can stand together and say, "We are both fighting for the same thing here, and we are on the same page," with our own. And I think that's important, because really, the financial impact of this ballot question of what's proposed November would be terribly burdensome, more so even for cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And Marty Walsh, Mayor of Boston, himself a charter supporter and a founding member of a charter school board, who was advocating to lift the cap in the legislative session, came up to a hearing that I was at, and he spoke about the charter school bill. And he said that it would wreak fiscal havoc on communities across the state, and that's from one of the biggest charter school supporters. So I think those two points. The first is, we're not asking for not to down charter schools, we're just specifically focused on a question ahead voters in November and the impact it would have on the city of Quincy. And two, I think the fiscal impact that this proposal will have is very important to keep in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
I think I'd like to open it up to the councilors, if you have anything to say. Councilor Kane?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Nick, and thank you, Allison, for coming tonight. Councilor Pro and I put this resolution forward back in April, and, you know, it was kind of a time to be more appropriate now, actually, had to come to the head in front of the Education Committee, in front of the City Council, hopefully later, and move forward to positive approval. But, you know, I kind of told this story before, I'm a product of public schools, I believe in the public schools. I went to Wallston School, and I went to Central Middle School, and Central Middle School is quite possibly one of the best educations that I've had, and I've gone to graduate school. I still look back on the teachers that I've had and the impact that the public school system in Quincy has had on me, and now I feel it's incumbent on me to support the system that has given me so much, and supporting people who have put me in this place to watch over a third of the budget in the city. You know, we currently have almost a $300 million budget, a third which belongs to the public schools. And any money that comes out of those coffers that we support every year, that we vote on the budget, it takes away from the students, it takes away from the teachers, it takes away from the hard work that I know that so many of the administrators and teachers put in every day to make these kids' lives better. You know, the fact that Quincy only has 29 students out of 9,000 attend charter schools is a pretty significant testament to our educational system. You know, $300,000 that's lost on a year basis sounded like the lowest number of all the cities and towns that you've mentioned, so to me, that indicates a job well done in Quincy Public Schools. You know, we just most recently, we voted on appropriation for some teacher aides, I think that was above $300,000. And imagine if that amount keeps coming out year after year, it's not going to be replaced by anything, and we're going to have to find that money and take it from elsewhere, and that's not something that I'm willing to do. This is about money, it's about people, it's about supporting the superintendent, Dr. Chris Farland, the good work that he does, and his team, it's about supporting the teachers, it's about supporting the students, and it's about supporting my colleagues on the school committee, who also wish their favor of this voting no on question two. So tonight, I will be making a motion for positive approval, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment.
Anybody else for councilors?
Do you want me to go?
Positive recommendation from Councilor Kane. Councilor Finn?
Mr. Chairman, again, I'm not sure if you're, I'm not a member of the committee, but would you mind explicitly ask a question, particularly of Mr. Bolito. Mr. Bolito, this is kind of an interesting thing, because unfortunately, as you know, campaigns sometimes, that there's massive amounts of money that are spent on television ads in order to sway voters to a particular point of view. Oftentimes, they don't contain much context, they can be full of hyperbole. But one of the things that you're here this evening is talking about is the very real issue, it seems to me, about what this costs the public schools, and what this costs local municipalities and towns who have to deal with the emergence of this. And yet, there seems to be, I see ads constantly, watching football games or whatever, that are basically suggesting somehow opponents of lifting the cap are somehow misleading people by saying that this is going to cost the cities, and are asserting an opposite claim, that somehow this is money that municipalities receive back. It's a very subtle, interesting way that they're playing it, but as the, you mentioned the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and Councilor Kane shared one of the articles from their newsletter, but it was talking about the key thing is that the dollars to charter schools and the transfers occur off-budget and are not appropriated as part of the state budget or any local budgeting resources that, in effect, do cost public schools dearly. Could you comment on that for us a little bit, because I'm sure people are watching this, and it might be helpful, just to clear up, that these ads might not be shooting straight, so to speak.
Sure. And maybe for the question, Councilor, and I think, just for context, the ads that you're seeing on TV are being produced by the same folks who, back when John Kerry ran for president, produced the Swift Veterans For Truth ads, that made the claim that he was not a real Commonwealth hero, that he did not serve his country proud. So that's just a little context in terms of who's right in there with there. But in terms of funding, so if we go back, Councilor Kane mentioned that Quincy currently has 29 students attending charter schools that they're assessed tuition for, and occurring, so that's a breakdown. Of those 29, four are in Cambridge at a single charter school, there are among our four in Boston charter schools of various forms, and then 21 students are going to South Shore Charter School in Norwell. And so, when you look at the program that's out there, and see, so first of all, in terms of payment, if the charter payments are reduced from the Chapter 70 money that the state gives the city of Quincy, so when they go through and look at the charter school enrollment of the community here, they then deduct how much Chapter 78 Quincy gets based on enrollment of charter schools. And so, part of what the ads are trying to say is, no, 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 they get, the city is reimbursed for those students, but the $361,000 that Senator, sorry, that comes on promoting, that Councilor Kane mentioned, that Councilor Kane mentioned, is after reimbursement. So after reimbursement, the city of Quincy loses $361,000. And on top of that, if you actually follow the formula, so this reimbursement scheme that they put forward as giving schools more money, Quincy actually should receive about $50,000 more than it actually does, but the state has not fully funded that line item. So the city of Quincy is actually entitled under the formula, except that it's subject to a brokerage, $50,000 more in funding than it receives. And so, when you expand that out based on the number of charter schools, and I think it is a testament to the city of Quincy that there are only 29 students in charter schools. However, it's also a proximity issue. So the nearest one, the nearest suburban ones in Norwell, the nearest urban ones are closer by, but if one went to go to Green Tree or someday in Quincy under question two, those numbers might shift dramatically based on proximity. And I think when we look at that, and that can be unlimited in terms of the number of students that could go and the amount of money it could lose. And so, when you look at the classroom, the argument's made, the argument may be at, say, the dollar follows the student, you'll hear that over and over, and the dollar follows the student, which is a great topic. However, when we look at actual schools, it's never that mean. So if a charter school opens, you never lose 24 fourth graders, and then you can lay off one fourth grade teacher to make up the cost. The reduction in scale is just not to air. What often happens is you lose one, two, or two or three students per grade, and so at the rate that Quincy pays, you're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars spread over the course of multiple buildings, multiple grades, and multiple school levels, so elementary, middle, and high school. And I think when you look at where do the dollars actually go, the economy of scale is there. So, for instance, Wallston Elementary School, I believe used to have three sections of each grade, is that still the case?
It probably fluctuates something.
Okay. So if we look at Wallston, and we come up with, say, a fourth grade has three sections of a fourth grade, and we want to keep class size in the 24 to 28 range for fourth graders. Really, that 24 to 28 is important for the educational quality of Quincy Public Schools. So when you have, in the third section, say, you lose 10 kids, you still have to pay for three sections, you still, in order to keep your educational quality standards. So even though the dollars have a look at the student, there's no economy of scale in the actual building. So what we see in many districts are schools cutting buskers, schools cutting nurses, librarians, custodial staff, after-school programs, science lab, and the things that aren't part of the core curriculum in order to offset those logstubs, because they cannot get rid of the individual sections in the school.
So, to sum up, this advertising campaign is kind of misleading, and that when people are making, opponents are making the case that this is going to be very costly to school systems and local municipalities, that's fairly accurate, and true.
Yes, Councilor?
Sure, thank you.
Councilor Pro?
Thank you, Chairman de Vondel. Also, I'm also not a member of the Education Committee. Yeah, over here, my parents. Also not a member of the formal Education Committee, but grateful to stand alongside Councilor Kane there, and, you know, bring this, this resolution forward. I've done some research on a whole variety of things as it pertains to this particular, you know, ballot election. And Allison, you kind of chatted about it at the beginning, you talked about accountability that these charter schools have to the actual municipal or stakeholders in the community. Can you kind of shine a light a little bit more on that, on that area?
Sure, I can, I can tell you, give you a little bit of information. So, for example, a charter school that's operating, as Nick said, for example, in Norwell, it pulls Quincy students, the Quincy School Committee has absolutely no authority whatsoever with regard to the budget, for example, of that particular charter school, has no voice in how money is spent, what money is spent on, there is no accountability in terms of policies, curriculum, teaching methods that are used, hours of the day, there's no accountability whatsoever in the performance of these schools, and school committees, we lose those students, we lose that money, and we have, Quincy elected officials have no say over how that money is spent.
So essentially, the financial component is completely portable, but the ability to weigh in on decisions taking place at wherever a charter school is, is non-existent.
That's exactly correct.
So you're basically relinquishing your funding to an alternative location, and you have zero authority or input on really anything on the, the curriculum.
The Department of Education has the oversight, so we're giving up local money, local control, and we're giving it essentially to the state if it's going to pass.
And it's actually pretty profound when you go out and see how many school committees, particularly, come out in opposition to this, to this ballot election. And that list seems to, seems to have been growing the longer that I followed this question.
That's right.
You know, when I think about, and Councilor Kane brought it up, roughly a third of the city's budget, you know, is allocated per year, because this city's standard, as we believe in public education, and we also do a lot of investing outside of the annual budgetary appropriation, you know, towards education, and I'm proud of that, I'm proud of what Castle folks, you know, might call a short time up there at the City Council, at the City Council. When I think about the, the vote that was cast the other night in terms of putting forward a regional middle school, I mean, that is a loud declaration from the city that we believe in public education, we believe in employees on the public education system that help facilitate, you know, the positive impacts on our kids' lives. So, I mean, for me, this is about, this is about supporting a vision that, you know, exists inside of, inside of the community. You know, Council Finn, it was funny, because I got in my car this morning, and I was, the first thing that I heard was how much money that, you know, charter schools were going to bring back to the, to the city, or the town, you know, and I know that that's big business, and behind big business is, you know, a lot of private dollars being spent on advertising and marketing. But the reality is this, you know, we have a decision to make this election, and for the City Council, it's pretty straightforward, you know, I assume, the men and women, you know, the public education institution that we have in play, so I want to thank you.
And it's important to note that you grew up, can you share with the group your background?
Well, I raised my, I raised my two children here in Quincy, and my two children are products of the public school system, I'm extremely proud of them.
You're also an educator.
Their education is similar to what Councilor Kane was describing, was exceptional, the teachers were exceptional, but not just the teachers, but the support staff, the regional services, it just was way beyond classroom. And it's everybody working together under the superintendent, the superintendent's leadership is second to none, and I'm very proud to work with him in the school committee. It's made, you know, we're very hard to make sure that our schools are top-notch, are, you know, on the cutting edge of innovation, and we're very responsive, I think, to the public and to the parents. And I think the 29 students out of more than 9,000 going to charter schools, I think that's testament to the confidence that our residents have, our parents have, in our schools.
No further questions, Mrs. Chairman, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Lee?
This is the create question for Ida one of you, but I do want to start by commending Councilor Kane and Councilor Dopey, as a part of us. I want to take this opportunity to talk a little bit more about what's processed needs and engagement that may not have other than the public schools, and talk about why it's important to them. Councilor Pro had mentioned that we, very recently, on the Finance Committee, approved our aim to fund a brand-new school. Now, we're talking about a third of our tax dollars, a third of our budget going to public school systems, and that includes small projects that we've approved this year, you know, with windows in a couple of schools. You've talked a little bit, Allison, about the funding going to the classrooms themselves for, you know, books for teachers, but they can also be applied to the infrastructure career.
That's absolutely correct.
So the funding that, you said, the losses here are 300,000, I think, that could have been put toward the 500,000 we used to replace the walls to windows schools, correct?
That's right, so 361,000, then went on to any expenditure related to Quincy Public Schools, you're absolutely correct.
I just wanted to mention about what you mentioned about, because they don't want folks that might not have kids in the public school system to think, well, you know, I don't have children that are affected by this, but on the flip side, it does affect their tax dollars, because it's being used for this purpose, and if we're going to use a third of our tax dollars to improve the schools, I want them to make sure that we use 100% of that, what we're doing in schools, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else, councilors? I'd just like a couple of comments, myself, and maybe a few questions, as, like, like my, like, my colleague, Councilor Kane, and as well as Councilor Pro, I'm a product of the Quincy Public Schools, and I think it's a great system, we're looking to build new schools and do more things in the city of Quincy, going through Daniel Webster Point Sterling Quincy High School, was the four-track, I guess I caught of. Working, very similar like Nick on the school committee as well, working with you, Allison, and I know hand-in-hand with this team that you're around, is dedicated to the children, to the parents of the city. I thank you for all your hard work and your continued hard work. Few questions, the biggest one is the propaganda that we hear, they've been hearing it on the radio, I've been seeing it on TV, the propaganda of somebody coming on and saying, oh, yes, on this question. Can you talk a little bit about that coalition, and where the boots are coming from, why, or where the funding's coming from, for that stance on the upside?
Sure, I'm going to defer to, I want to have you on, I hope he has more to add.
Thank you.
Sure, to answer your question, it's a little hard to now. When we look at filings and folks who look this up on the Office of Campaign for Global Lineings, which is ocpf.us, the folks in favor of the SMT ballot campaign have set up four distinct ballot committees to support the campaign through various mechanisms. When we look at where the funding is coming from, the major funders, the number one is a group called Families for Excellent Schools out of New York, which, when we dig a little further, their contributors are secret, they're not disclosed, but what we do know is that they are largely Wall Street investment managers or Wall Street finance leaders, that's a proper term, to talk about, to look at where exactly the funding is from. So we see a lot of money coming from New York, from Wall Street, we also see over a million dollars coming from the heirs of the Walmart fortune, so from Arkansas to Massachusetts, we see Michael Bloomberg in New York sending money up to We see Michael Bloomberg in New York sending money up to Massachusetts, and really, the large dollars, the majority of the funding in the campaign is coming from out-of-state, and much of it's what's been pouring is dark money, which is money that's filtered through nonprofits, or filtered through other organizations that aren't disclosed. So for instance, when you run through some council, and donations are solicited, and you look, anyone can pick up your campaign finance report and say, you know, Mrs. Smith on Hill Street, or a book through the report, and see exactly who gave it to you. When we look at these reports, we see large sums by your out-of-state groups, and then where those groups get their money is not disclosed.
One more question I'd like to ask, Allison, as well, is we hear a lot about charter schools, not so much in the City of Quincy, but outside of the City of Quincy. Can you talk a little bit of why Boston is so crucial in this, and where the other charter schools are around this base Quincy? Can you talk a little bit about that?
I think, Mr. Fulea, I actually have a little bit more of that information in your mind.
Sure, so the first one is where the other charter schools are.
Yes.
So they're statewide, and really, they vary by the population they serve widely. So there's one in Norwell, I think those are the closest ones I can recall on the South Shore, there's a number in the State of Boston. And just to make a distinction, there's two different types of charter schools, there's a Commonwealth Charter School, which is what we're talking about in the ballot question, and then there's what's called a Horseman Charter School, which is a completely different entity. It's essentially forming a school of an existing municipal building with existing teachers and existing structure, and they just work on different policies, different school days, different curriculum, things like that. So there's a number in Boston, they're clustered around major cities, but then you have outliers like Plymouth and Norwell. One great example is in South Tabbly, Massachusetts, which is one of the top-performing school districts in the state. A charter school actually opened, I think it was about 500 students, and it's a language immersion charter school, and so they were able to get parents from really strong school systems to apply their kids, because they focused on language immersion. And so, it varies, and admission and inclusion vary, just depending on where, whatever group forms a start charter school, the size of focus on.
Nick, Allison, I want to thank you for all your time here tonight. We have a positive recommendation on the floor here. We're going to move to approval. Second round of the second, but you can, if we could, we can roll call.
Councilor Kay?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Yang?
Yes.
Councilor Chou?
Yes.
So positive recommendation, we'll pull this out in regular City Council tonight, myself and the committee. And with all that said, I want to thank you, it is now 7:06, and this concludes this meeting.